Yeah.
I think I.
Well, that's a good point. If it gets done, that's good.
She said, would you mind if we sent our painter down?
And.
Eight years ago.
That's how the. That's how the federal grants, state grants.
The lobbies got painted gold. I guess only if you Jackson Brown was coming to.
Tomorrow.
Seriously.
Yeah.
Well, the main thing that we're hoping is.
I was used.
I mean, first of all, they have to deal with the fact that it's. You know, the Senate added the flag language. They've got to deal with that, but they've already. House of Oxen's already said we're going to just reverse it. But what we're hoping is that we can roll the new charter stuff. And I've been back and forth with Tucker Anderson to get the language. So so we're hoping.
I'm buried in it.
That's the main reason I want to be there.
What that child got away with.
They're so busy with stuff. You know, with. I'm afraid they're gonna just let things like new charges just sit. Yeah, so until the new by any of them, I want. Make sure that we do everything we can to get that.
I should.
It's just too important. There's too much.
Yeah.
Probably, but sometimes, but sometimes with the veto session, you want to take anything new up. They only want to.
I think you've seen.
We'll see.
Let's see.
Yeah, I could.
You're talking about Central Vermont Public Center. Do you want to give me a call afterwards?
But I hope you'll take action tonight. It's really.
Well, good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock PM, and I'm going to call this meeting of the Berry City Council to order. It is Tuesday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty two at seven PM. Council present tonight include Counselor Deering, Counselor Sean Bell, Counselor Voodoo, Counselor Lozong, Counselor Stockwell, and Counselor Wazazak. Also with us tonight for staff is Clerk Treasurer Dawes and Manager McKenzie. Tonight's agenda is available online and in the back of the room. If you if you need a copy here to follow the proceedings of the meeting tonight, this meeting has been publicly posted and noticed. It's being recorded and subject to Vermont's open meeting law and councils' rules of procedures, which are both available online. I'd like to offer a warm welcome to all of our guests and members of the public joining us tonight, to those joining us online. The chat function should really only be used for technical issues or difficulties. It's not for ongoing commentary. And please just raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized. We offer the online access as a convenience, and we will continue the meeting if any technical difficulties occur. I'll call on speakers in order and allowing people who haven't spoken to speak first. And if you have any questions about the process or procedure, please ask. The next item on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. Are there any additions to deletions from or modifications to the agenda from Counselor Management McKenzie, Clerk Dawes?
I have none.
Nothing for me.
Here, Council goes on.
Could we move A and B below C and D? In the interest of getting these fine folks out of here sooner than later, because A and B are more council items.
Uh, no, because I would say A, yes, B, no, because uh, the appointments of C and D depend on an amendment to the municipal bodies and appointments policy. Otherwise, they're out of order. Oh, they haven't gone through the proper notification timeline, so we would have to amend the policy first. And if Council doesn't amend those policies, then 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 these appointments would not be in order, but A could move down to uh, below D. Does that work with you, Council? I would also say we could move up the resignation of Raina Dean from the Police Advisory Committee to the consent agenda. Just move that along a little faster. Any other additions to deletions from or modifications to the agenda?
Should we take up Mr. Whitaker's question regarding Central Vermont? Well, it would be, but if we're talking about appointments, that would be in addition to the agenda versus through visitors and communications, right?
Well, I'll note that Stephen and I talked about this open seat and the minutes of last meeting said that this would be on tonight's agenda. We discussed it last Wednesday, the day after the meeting, and noted that it needs to be advertised for our current policy. It's not currently on the advertised list. And and at this time, there's no one who has expressed interest in appointment for that position. And so I think we should we should follow our policy for that to be in order.
I think the concern, though, is Mr. Whitaker saying that it there it's you're at a precipice right now. Is that? Can you explain that?
Well, let's move on to visitors and communication then.
But we can't add it to the agenda if we go to visitors and communications unless you want to go back.
Yeah. So do you want to add it, Counselor?
I would say yes.
So we're on what what item of the agenda?
Wherever you want to put it, I would say it after.
Okay, let's put it.
Ending appointments.
After the planning commission appointments.
No. Downstreet is planning. Yeah, I don't see anybody here yet, or maybe online, but I'd actually suggest after E. Because we don't know how long that appointment will just discussion will go.
Okay, we'll do it after the Downstreet hearing request then. That takes us to visitors and communication. This is a point when members of the public can speak to items that are not on the agenda, and members of public are welcome to speak to items as we take up those items of business on the agenda. So is the are there any items for visitors and communication? Hearing and seeing none, that takes us to the consent agenda, and that's where we group routine informational non-controversial items. Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of March twenty second, twenty twenty two. Approval of the city warrants from the week Wednesday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty two, the clerk's offices licenses, permits. Are there any?
I do have one. Yep, a food establishment license for the snack shack at five fifteen North Main Street has all the appropriate department approvals.
It wants to check. And the last two items are the acceptance of Rich Maury's letter of resignation from the manager's search task force and the acceptance of Raina Dean's letter of resignation from the Police Advisory Committee. Would any members of council like to remove an item of the consent agenda and put it on to the regular agenda? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda presented? There's a motion by Counselor Sean Bell. Second by Counselor Stockwell. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, no. Guys have it. Motion carries. Consent agenda is adopted. That takes us to the next item agenda, which is the Clerk Treasure Report. Clerk Treasurer Dawes.
Couple things. A final reminder that water and sewer bills are due by the thirty first, which is Thursday. So stop in the office and pay them or put them in the drop box by the front door as long as they're received by four thirty on Thursday, or you can mail them as long as they're postmarked by Thursday. That's a US Post Office postmark, not a postage meter mark from like your office or something like that. Or you can pay online through the portal on our website. There is a small service charge if you use that particular method. And again, the payment needs to be made by four thirty on the due date. The only other thing I just wanted to let the council know that we received word today that Brian Judd has filed a motion to re, and I'm drawing a blank. It's like reconsider the the ruling of the Supreme Court, so we will wait and hear what the court's actions are on that. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Clerk Treasurer Dawes? Hearing and seeing no questions, that takes us to the Liquor Control Board. Are there any items for the Liquor Control Board tonight?
Yep, um, there, and there should be a packet of materials in with your council packet. I'm hoping that it made it in there.
I don't believe I saw that.
That would have added like forty pages.
No, it wasn't quite that many, but.
I don't think.
Well, it was it was sent to be included in the packet.
Oh, I wonder if that was this morning. Nope, probably this morning.
So it looks like it's still not posted online.
Okay, so we will defer them to next week.
Carol, do you know when that was sent?
I emailed it. I believe I emailed it to Jody yesterday to include in yesterday's packet. Yesterday, this morning's packet, so because I wasn't around last Friday.
Question, Mayor, is there anything time sensitive in the? No? Okay, so next week is fine.
Um, we do have the one thing we do have in addition to we've got the license renewals are the ones that will hold off, but I do have on an education sampling event permit application from Matt Pocat for the Berry Opera House the Vermont Burlesque Festival that's being held at the Opera House on April twenty second, and that does require council approval.
So are there any questions on this application from council or members of the public?
So moved.
Hearing and seeing no questions, there's a motion to approve by Counselor Lozong, second by Counselor Wazazak. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed.
Stay.
One extension from Counselor Voodoo. The eyes have it. The motion carries and.
I do want to just mention that the reason that we're deferring on the the license renewals is that as per the city policy and the agreement that we have with the Division of Liquor Control, the council gets scans of all the licenses for review before they're approved, and since you didn't get the packet, we want to make sure we're in compliance with our with our policy, so they will come back next week.
The next item on the agenda is item seven is the city manager's report.
The only addition I have to written report is like get this cast taken off the map.
Are there any questions for the manager?
So what's next?
There's one more thing I'm fitted with training.
Okay, just checking.
So yeah, no further questions, that takes us to unfinished business, which we have no unfinished business listed. And so that's item, takes us to item nine. B, the amendment to the municipal bodies and appointments policy. And if you look in the agenda, I've written up a summary. The motion that's recommended for this is to approve the policy amendments as presented. And direct the manager to update the volunteer opportunities page on the first business day of April, of April. Prepare and present an appointments tracking sheet to council no later than April twenty six, twenty twenty two. What the policy does is it shortens the. Notification posting timeline, it was six weeks, it shortens it down to four. It says that the posting should be made at least monthly instead of quarterly. And that once an open position has gone through one cycle of advertisement, it can be filled on a rolling basis. So that still ensures that anybody, any member of the public is given equal opportunity to apply. I think three weeks is still adequate notice. They can submit their application if after that first cycle, nobody applies. Then they can be filled. You'll also notice in the markup that there is a new section on youth appointments. It says, and I'll just read that since that's substantive. Any city body may include a youth advisory member of a suitable age. The council may extend voting privileges to youth members appointed to established voting seats of a body. If doing so is not in conflict with the city ordinance, municipal charter, or general law. Existing committee officers are encouraged to serve as mentors to youth advisory members. And elevate the perspectives of young people in very. Are there any questions on this, this proposal? Council Lozón.
Yes, could we strike, and I apologize, Mayor, there's no, there's no page number references on this. But in the section that describes posting of open seats. It's pretty specific. It says with postings occurring on the first business day of each month. Just a little, I mean, I don't have an issue with the monthly. But you know, first business day, if you miss it by one day, you're in violation of the policy. So if we could just, suggestion that we strike that line.
So is that a motion to amend, propose?
Well, we're, we're actually, the motion is going to be to amend it, so I'm not sure.
Provised amended.
Yeah, so if as the presenter, you're okay with just striking that line, then I think, I don't think we need a separate motion necessarily for that.
Which line number is that?
I am. Pages in.
Section three.
Item, what would be item three, where it talks about posting on the first business day of the month. It just, you know, especially with depending on where you're posting it, for example, if you're posting. In the local paper, there are deadlines, so you may not be, it just seemed a little restrictive, that's all.
Would you be open to saying the first week of the month?
Yeah, that's fine.
Any other questions, concerns?
How cumbersome is this policy?
Well, it's pretty prescriptive. I mean, I think. Some time before we get it down to a science, I mean, the base policy has been out there for a while. It's, it's very prescriptive.
And then, Mr. Whitaker.
Could I just ask if that policy includes provisions or accommodations? Or is it conflict with statutory examples like the charter where a mandatory vacancy has to be filled with forty five days?
No, it's, it's not in conflict because it says under non applicability, any part of this that is in conflict with a municipal charter. Including a charger for regional authority or general law.
I didn't have a question, I was gonna offer a motion, so.
Council Sean Bell.
I'm just wondering what a suitable age is. I think that's a bit vague.
I went back and forth on that, so. Equity Committee would like to see it included middle schoolers to through age eighteen high schoolers.
But, but I, I, that was one of my comments and suitable is a, is a vague word and it's in the eye of the beholder. I would say pick the age, whatever it is the council. Prefers, but then it just, it eliminates any room for debate.
Right, and you know, even middle schoolers, depending on where somebody goes to school, that can be as low as fifth grade.
Is there an age you'd recommend as a, as an educator?
I mean, some of us are adults and.
We appoint this individual, correct?
Yes.
So wouldn't it just make sense to have that be at the advice of the council of the individual, whether we appoint them or not?
Yeah, and that's sort of consistent with the current language where the council's determining what's suitable for the position. But if there's an interest in more prescriptive language about a specific age.
Fourteen, my interest.
Council Stockwell.
I would agree with Michael that fourteen is a reasonable age, fourteen through high school.
Council Wazazak.
I would agree with, or I won't say that because I'm not trying, you don't want to misstate anyone's opinion. So I was kicked out at fifteen, so I grew up really quick. I find age to be relatively. A fluid metric, for lack of a better term. I've met some very mature fifteen year olds. I've met some very immature twenty five year olds. So assuming that. The council can, and I'm so sorry, this is an incredibly long day for me, so my brain is foggy. Assuming that it's with completely within the council discretion and there's nothing else prohibiting. The council appointing a youth member of any given age to a body where a youth member wants to participate and the council feels it's appropriate. Could we not simply take the language out and that would still leave the council without authority? Like, so in other words, do we have to specifically write down that youth members are allowed? Or do we just take the lack of language as approval for counsel to appoint whomever it's fit?
The intent behind the youth language is to make an affirmative statement of inclusion. We really do want to invite youth to the table. And so I'd leave that in. I'm hearing that there's at least three counselors that are interested in fourteen. Maybe two counselors that would prefer to leave it more flexible. Are there any other thoughts on this?
I mean, I'm flexible because I agree with Counselor Wazazak that you can have some very young, mature. Young people, I mean extraordinary, and they may well be younger than fourteen. And. And the obvious for the contrary, but. I don't know.
I just threw the number out there for you, I'm not gonna lie.
Council Wazazak, or sorry, Council Lozón.
I was just going to offer to strike of a suitable age. So to strike of a suitable age, so it makes the statement that the mayor is looking for. That any city body may include a youth advisory member, period. And we're not referencing maturity or age or lack of maturity, but don't judge me. Yeah.
So it looks like there's consensus for that modification. Are there any objections to that modification?
Point of information, there is a definition of youth, which is between fifteen and twenty four years, just thought you'd want to know.
But whose definition? So that's taken out. Are there any other?
There is a comment on, oh, the hand went down. Yes, but they had.
Are there any other, yes, councilors?
On that same clause. Again, just a suggestion, I think the very last phrase, it starts with and elevate.
I might have written this at two in the morning.
That, that last phrase just seems vague or. It would just seem to me that the phrase reading, existing committee officers are encouraged to service mentors to youth advisory members, period, and just leave it at that.
Are there any, are there any objections to that change? Seeing, hearing none. Any further modifications before, for most Council Lozón?
Very quickly.
Yeah.
Because I won't belabor it. At some point, I, I want to have a serious discussion about the use of executive session for appointments. With all due respect, I'm just not a fan.
We may have that tonight.
Oh, no, we don't have to have it tonight. I'm willing to vote for this policy. As is just in the interest of moving things along, but, but I really would like to have that, that discussion at some point about. What is an appropriate use of executive session when you're making appointments?
Put that on a future agenda, so.
Is there a, yeah, I don't need to, I just got a few more. On the second page under policies, procedures, the membership of the body. D one, the policy recommends odd number bodies with fewer than seven members, which, which effectively would mean five.
Be seven or fewer, right?
I would suggest to say with up to seven members. Because we have, we, we have bodies right now that are seven. And quite frankly, you've got one committee that wants to go to nine. Council, but.
That seems to be consistent with the intent. Any objections to that change? Seeing and hearing none.
On page, I think it's the third page also under posting open seats, it's item seven. The equal opportunity statement, if you will, which is fine, but it's something that was curious to me. Place of birth, the third line from the end, place of birth, association with a member of illegally protected category listed above crime victim status and health insurance coverage.
I was just saying, this is language that was provided by staff in the last.
Okay, but well, we're guys of the source, I just said. Coverage status has to do with equal opportunity.
So you couldn't discriminate them based on the status of their health insurance?
Probably a copy from an employment policy.
And the other. Under the, on the application form. There, it's not clear to me whether the intent is to require an applicant to. Attend a meeting prior, a committee meeting prior to being considered or not. I think there's contradiction in here. Because under item three, it says the form shall collect contact information from applicants, which may be redacted in the council's packet in the interest of privacy. Ask why the applicant is voted to serve and if they have attended a meeting of a municipal body. If an existing municipal body and that, it almost seems like it's a. A criteria for exclusion if they haven't attended a meeting. So my suggestion is probably make it a requirement.
I, I think there was intentionally left a little bit flexible in that there could be an appointment for. For a body that doesn't currently have a quorum and could not meet. But to be an encouragement, Council Wazazak.
I also remember there being a conversation of. Attending an actual meeting of the body if it already existed or having a prior conversation with the chair of that body. It's just also something that came up last time we talked about this.
So is there a proposal? Hearing and seeing none on that one.
Well, so I would ask, does the manager have a specific proposal for number three? The one, yeah, just the same one.
Yeah, well. And I understand what, what the mayor said, my proposal would, would be or would have been to. Say it's required. But that's. Of itself.
Yeah, I'm, I'm finally.
I was, I was operating under the policy that it was the intent of the council to have potential applicants or applicants. Attend a meeting before the nomination came forward, but if that's not the intent of the council, that's fine, this.
I think that some flexibility is necessary and Council Wazazak's experience with the Police Advisory Committee speaks to that.
Yeah, and that's sort of the intent of these modifications is to provide a little bit more flexibility while at the same time. Having a good, good rolling procedure. Any further changes?
But one, one last question is the very last item, the public information of a body. All municipal bodies shall have a city webpage and the city manager or designate shall maintain a current webpage. In accordance with the existing rules. So. I think some committees have webpages and Jody will. Provide support, but. I think that was a little confusing to me and it seems like in my judgment, the. Responsible for their own webpage, at least in terms of content. And so on and so forth.
Does a committee have access to update the website?
I assume they did.
I think there's something, I think we're talking about two different things. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what Steve is talking about is more social media webpages. As opposed to what this policy is talking about, which is like. The section on the Berry City website where it says Police Advisory Committee and the agenda is listed and that type of stuff. That's what this.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's what.
Or is this intended to say they'll have a social media?
This is ensuring that on the Berry City website, when we have that list of. That any officially formed body is up on there.
Which we would have to have.
Right, which we'd have to go through council on the first.
Yeah, and to meet open meeting law, that's how we're using those webpages right now.
Yeah, that's fine.
Burn, Burn Rose.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you. Um, one of the. Things that I've thought about for our committee, the ADA committee is. We have a person who is interested in joining our committee and who is joining because of their neurodiversity. And attending council might be a little bit of a, a challenge for them. So I just want to make sure that there's nothing in there that would prohibit me from like. Doing that with that person as a support person, because there might be people who need service people like myself. To help negotiate or who might be. Who appearing at council could be an almost near trauma event. And so I wanted to work with the person before they came to council. For, to meet you, and so just making that be really user friendly for people who are. Are, you're going to interview is important to me. As from coming from our committee, I don't know, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I think that's a point well made, Burn, and, and I can see where we, under the posting of open seats, we could take this step further. From the equal opportunity statements to say reasonable accommodations will be made. As an amendment, is there any objection to saying that we'd make any reasonable accommodation for an appointee? Hearing and seeing none, does that finalize your corrections? Okay.
Thank you, that, that, that is exactly the words that I would have used had I been thinking.
Well, thank you for that. Is there a motion to approve?
I mean, to approve the policy with any changes that we've agreed upon.
There's a motion by Council Stockwell, is there a second?
Second, but.
Second by Council Dearing. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Council Stockwell.
It's seven thirty and I believe that Downstreet is here, so perhaps we should move Downstreet ahead of. It's seven thirty and I believe that down the street is here, so perhaps we should move down the street ahead of the next item.
The, the motion carries and yeah, it is, it is seven thirty, but I think we might be able to get through these other appointments quickly.
Okay.
If we can, uh, I think it's probably more important that, that we don't start early than if we start a little bit late. So if the case?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, now that takes us to the item nine C to, uh, police advisory committee. Uh, Sandy Bruce, thank you so much for coming. If you, uh, like to introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in the committee. And thanks for the wonderful letter too. I know you did it in our packet as well, so.
Hi, I'm Sandy Bruce. I'm going to take my mask off to speak. And I'm a resident of the city of Berry. I've lived here for about thirty-two years and my mom's originally from Berry. And I'm the CEO of Central Vermont Home Health and Hospice. I've worked pretty much in Berry, I'm up here since I've lived here. And reason being, you do have my letter. Uh, my dad was a police officer, uh, when I grew up. And, um, certainly we were a part of the police family, abandoned brothers, so to speak. And I saw how law enforcement really does tend well to their community without violence and with compassion and really cares about the community and its members. Um, which I think is really important. In addition to that, I have personal experience from a family perspective, um, with brother who has a severe mental illness where law enforcement has had to be involved. And I've seen it work both ways. From the perspective of them coming in and being very compassionate and being able to manage the situation with certain resources. And I've also seen the other side where they beard away because they don't have the resources and tools they need. We have a lot of that in our community. We confront it every day in our work. And our staff see it all the time and they really need support out there. I think we also, um, in my work, we work very closely with public safety, with EMS. And, um, we have a good model in Berry City where we have a mental health clinician and a resource officer that works with their team. I think if that needs to be expanded, I think there are a lot of things we could do differently to really support our officers. And really think about how we use our resources. And who needs to be doing what under those circumstances and situations. So those are the things that have sparked my interest. I know there's policies and procedures that I think we need to have in place. I do think I look at it from a perspective of you can't script everything out. So, you know, I can see both sides of that. So I'm interested in learning more about it and I want to keep our community safe for everyone. So.
Well, thank you for that great introduction and thanks, uh, for attending the reception, uh, for Chief Fail on Sunday. It was, it was good to see you there. Are there, so this is for a, uh, an a seat, uh, it's the only open seat right now on the, or two, there are two open seats on the police advisory committee. So one opening, and do we know how, how long the terms are or when the terms expire?
I haven't, we'll, we'll research that, but I haven't had a chance.
Are there any questions for Sandy's counsel those on?
Just, uh, just a motion. I've known, uh, Sandy and her husband for decades. And I'm so proud of the work that, that both of you do, not only professionally. Sandy actually was, uh, employed by my firm for a period of time and that was decades ago. And as we approach April fifteenth, I realized that you've made the right decision. But I, I, I'm thrilled to, uh, and proud to appoint, uh, to, uh, recommend Sandy for, uh, appointment to the police advisory committee.
Thank you. There's a motion by Council Loson, second by Counselor Booton. Any further discussion? Counselor was as.
I would just say, do you have, I know you got the chance to talk to Chair Bob Nelson and was able to fill you in on like some of the stuff we've been working on the past couple of months. Great. So I, I was just going to offer, if he hadn't done that, to do some of that. And I just say, I'm very excited to have you on the committee and specifically your, the perspective that you bring from your role at Health and Hospice, I think is going to be really, really valuable. I'm looking forward to it.
Great, thank you.
Great. So there's a motion, second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, guys have it, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Sandy.
That takes us to the planning commission appointment. We have, uh, one vacancy, two applicants. It's, uh, item nine D. We'll start with, uh, the first applicant, Rosemary Everell, uh, who's joining us online. Hi, Rosemary, how are you?
I'm fine, Mayor. How are you? And counselors and guests, pleasure to see you this evening. I'm sorry I'm not there. I'm, uh, way outside of Vermont, so I couldn't drive. I would be there otherwise, but I'm happy to be here via Zoom. Thank you. So I continue.
Yeah, would you like to just speak to why you're interested in, uh, planning commission?
Sure. As I mentioned in the information that I sent to all of you. I love my hometown and, and, uh, I'm in a position in my, in my life. I've just retired for the second time and the last time. And I really want to give back to the community that has been so good to my family for, for years and years and years. My grandparents immigrated from Spain and Scotland during the granite boom. And my parents raised me and my siblings and my husband Charlie and I have raised our kids here. And it just seems like, uh, an appropriate, uh, task or duty to, um, want to do something meaningful and positive for the community. And certainly looking at the growth and how Barry's going to continue to progress, uh, does interest me. And for those reasons, um, I applied. I will briefly state that, um, you know, my work in, in business history, uh, I'll briefly go into it. I, uh, was hired by National Life right out of high school and I climbed the corporate ladder to VP of Travel and Conference Management, um, and retired with that title in twenty twelve. Uh, it was an amazing, uh, experience. Uh, it had a lot to do with the work ethic. It had an incredible amount of, um, I, I love people. I like being able to work with people, collaborate. And that's what this function did for, for me. So I learned a lot in that position. And then in twenty twelve, I retired and I was recruited by another insurance company out of Atlanta to, uh, work with the CEO there on nine incentive programs, uh, across the country, uh, the world. He did amazing trips, uh, Monaco and my last trip in December was Dubai. And that was just an amazing experience, as you can imagine. So that's it. I, I have some, some involvement with the hospitality industry as well. So, um, I, I, I think that has been very beneficial in my growth, uh, as a person. So there you have it. I, I appreciate your consideration.
Thanks, thanks for that overview. And I understand you've attended a meeting of the planning commission.
Yes, very impressive. Yeah, it was great. It was really, uh, learn how to compromise. That was what I learned last week and it, it was, it was a good lesson.
Uh, are there any questions for the applicant? Rosemary Everell, Council goes on.
Thank you. Uh, Rosemary, thank you. Thank you, first of all, uh, for applying. Have you had an opportunity to review the city master plan and the zoning ordinances? Note, I said not read them, but we just review them.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't, I didn't, you know, I, I had a feeling this might, might be asked of me. Uh, no. I didn't, uh, and, and the municipal plan, which is really wa- was very well done in my opinion. And yes, I did. And I know that the, um, as I understood it from the meeting last week, that there will be, uh, discussion on the zoning and our housing needs and those will be, um, those will be great discussions to have, I'm sure, uh, again, for, for Barry's progression. So yes, is the.
You, you sort of asked, answered rather my, my second question, which was, um, you know, do you understand, uh, you know, the important work that is in front of the zone, of the planning commission at this point in time? You know, as it relates to, uh, the council's desire to expand housing opportunities within the city?
Yes, that, I mean, I've, I've, um, I've been in tune with that, uh, over the last few months. You know, talking about what the mayor and, uh, this task force has been working on and their ideas. And certainly, um, you know, I want to be part of those discussions. Would like to be.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Counselor Derry?
Um, so you answered the first question, which was if you had been involved in, uh, the planning commission work at all recently, it said you attended, uh, the last meeting they had. Um, so what role do you think that you can jump into the committee, uh, being a new member?
Well, first of all, I don't expect, I don't, um, I'm not an expert on anything, so I'm expecting to, to join if I'm, if I'm appointed. Join this committee, learning from those who have been on it. Certainly, if I'm appointed, I would be spending probably a lot more time, uh, looking at ordinances, looking at what, you know, the agenda's going to be driving. But I think that initially, uh, I would just be evaluating what's, you know, how, how the commission operates.
Thank you.
Are there other counsel was as.
Hi, Rosemary.
Hi, Teddy. How are you? Counselor, I should say.
You're fine. No, I just wanted to say, you know, we don't always, more often than not, we disagree on a lot of policy and a lot of like minutia. Uh, but I just very much appreciate that you always keep coming back and keep giving back to the community. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you, counselor.
Any further questions? I just have one question with, uh, with a lot of travel on the docket, uh, are, are you, how, are you, how often are you in Berry City and are you able, while you're traveling to consistently have internet access to be able to join remote meetings?
Uh, yes, a- actually I do right now. But I'm not going to be traveling that much. Uh, as a matter of fact, we will be leaving soon to return to Vermont. And, uh, probably not going to be traveling much, uh, over the course of the next six months, year. We're not, we're probably not coming back to Florida next year. Our daughter's having a child, so naturally we have to stay home. So I will be, I could be available easily.
Well, thank you. That takes us.
Thank you, thank you.
That takes us to our next applicant for under nine D planning commission appointment for the one they could see available. Joe Rail, Joe, if you'd like to come forward, introduce yourself.
So my name is Joe Rail. Um, I'm I've become interested in sort of stepping up to do kind of more in the city, you know, the last three or four months. Like Rosemary, I've been here a while, not quite as long as she has, very better or worse, I guess. Uh, I lived in Berry for about twenty years and had a pretty strong connection to it before then. Um, and like she said, it's, so it just kind of felt like the right time for me to kind of step up and maybe do some more for, for the community. You know, just something we're all part of and um, I had been sort of involved kind of indirectly behind the scenes a lot and it just seemed like the time to do, be more direct. And the reason the planning commission particularly appealed to me was because it seems like it's a place where there's a lot of room for practical, um, and wide ranging changes that can, or changes in policies and that, that can kind of you know, make a difference across the city on a wide number of topics and areas and it's and I just, that just feels to me because it's something, you know, it feels very concrete anyway, I guess, and it's very wide ranging and I have a wide range of interests, so that's that just appeals to me. And I think I would be a good fit for it just because of my method of dealing with problems. I try to look at multiple sides of everything. Um, I try to be in depth and look into all the, all the details before coming to a decision, um, on anything. And I also am, tend to be good with, um, coordinating with other people. That's something that comes into play in my, in my job a lot. I have to work with, you know, a whole diverse team of a lot of different people who have different outlooks and different, their own positions and their own, um, viewpoints and their own responsibilities. And a lot of what I have to do there, which is, I apply that across the board is sort of coordinating with them and find the best way to work with them to come to, you know, come to the solutions to whatever we're working on. And that seems like that's something that could apply very heavily to this, you know, to this commission as well. I mean, not just within the commission itself, but also there seems like there's a lot of room to coordinate with other committees and groups. You know, like for instance, in the last meeting, I attended that one as well. And one thing I noted was that, um, the, um, the chair mentioned coordinating with, you know, the housing teams, for instance, and that's like one example of that. And then in terms of, um, yeah, just, it just, it just seems like there's, you know, room for coordinating with different, different groups. And that's again, that's just one of my strengths and something I'm good at.
Well, thanks you for that introduction. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Derry?
So my first question is the same one that I asked Rosemary.
Sure. You know, in what role do you see yourself being able to jump into the commission work? Um, yeah, and I think my answer is actually going to be similar. Like I said, when I approach something new, um, I take the time to, um, explore it and look into it. And kind of find the best fit. So I don't necessarily know right now what exactly that would be, but that's something I would take the time to find out and learn as I go. In general, I mean, I have, I've, have some broad ideas, maybe because I have looked into, like, um, Counselor Lozon's question. I also looked at the, the, um, the city plan. Um, and one thing I made a note of as I was kind of looking through, I didn't have it read it in detail yet. It's probably, you know, quite long. But one of the things I made a note of was some of the various, um, plans that are upcoming that are mentioned. And I've kind of already started looking at some of those, the ones that haven't been started yet. Or they may have, I haven't had time to look into all of them in detail, but just ones that I might be find interesting or worthwhile to explore or look into. So I've started making a list of those, um, just in anticipation of the possibility and.
I had another question for you. So sure, you'd mentioned that you'd wanted to see some changes within the zoning or the commission. What kind of changes, as you've already said, would you like to see made?
Why not if I, like, it's had changes in specific? I don't think I know it well enough to, um, to say that yet, what that would be. But yeah, I think, um, yeah, I wouldn't presume to say to sort of say like, kind of jump in and try to shake everything up at once. Like I said, my approach is sort of to take my time and get to know things.
Other questions, Council Lozong?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Real, you, you, you answered the first question, so thank, thank you for that. You, thanks for anticipating that. Second question, I mean, you, you've attended a meeting, you've heard us, uh, talk about like the challenges and the, you know, the discussions are, that are going to be occurring over the next two to three months about how how the planning commission can, uh, can support, uh, and encourage, uh, housing opportunities in the city. I didn't know if you'd like to just comment on that.
Um, yeah, generally, yeah, and housing is a big one. And that's something obviously we've all been aware of for a long time. And that's something, again, it's not something I'm an expert on, but it's something that's, um, yeah, it's really important. And one thing I'm I've been sort of thinking about with that is, um, not just looking at what we need now, but like a, a big thing that's happening right now, not just here, but everywhere, sort of like the changing demographics, like what is a household that's changing? What does that mean? That's something we would need to anticipate. You know, going forward.
Thank you. And with that, uh, so with that, Mr. Mayor, it's, uh, so we had two applicants, one physician, correct? And I think, I, I think you understand how I think passionate we all are about
Of course.
having people involved in the community. And so again, I thank both, um, both you and Rosemary for for, you know, stepping forward.
Of course.
And it occurred to me, uh, Mr. Mayor, that if we had two vacancies on the planning commission, uh, then we could appoint both of these folks. So with that, I will tender my resignation. If you will, uh, send that down to the planning commission and I will move that we appoint, uh, Rosemary and Joe to the planning commission.
Well, may I ask if council will accept the resignation first?
Well, if I send it down, believe me. So you can acknowledge, I'm fine with you acknowledging the, the resignation, but I'm only kidding. I'm, I say that with all due respect, Mayor, I'm only kidding. But I, you know, again, it's all about encouraging. I appreciate the fact that this was going to be a difficult decision because you're both different, you both bring different skillsets, but having served on the planning commission, I appreciate so much, uh, the experience of the chair and vice chair and what they bring. And I just saw both of you, uh, you know, being a good fit. And, and as a counselor, any proposes, any changes that you propose, uh, as planning commission members? I mean, I get a second bite at that apple, so gotta be fair.
So we have a motion, um, from Counselor Lozon to appoint, uh, Rosemary Lynn Everell and Joe Rail to the planning commission.
Seconded. Seconded.
One seat is for expires in June 2023 and the second seat also expires in June.
Noted that as well.
So.
Didn't even have to say which was which.
And there's a second by Teddy, our councillor Wazazak, are there, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, eyes have it, most curious.
Thank you again.
Pointees. So that takes us, we can jump to. Nine.
Rosemary.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It takes us to, well, we could do nine A, but maybe if, if there's no objection, I'll push that behind the hearing for the down street request. And that's to push the very area development corp appointment after the. Warren seven thirty hearing for down streets request for Vermont Community Development Program, application for Granite City Apartments. Project and adoption of the resolution. Twenty twenty two oh two, and I think we have with us tonight. Is it Nicola?
Yes, Nicola Anderson.
Anderson, well, welcome. And I'll just, I'd just like to make a disclosure that. That I work for the Department of Housing Community Development, but I have no authority or influence over any actions of the Vermont Community Development Program. And so don't have any tie in, in my work to item under consideration.
Nicole, I just want to let you know Janet was planning to be here, but she's home sick in bed. So.
Oh, no.
And even, she can't even join by Zoom. But.
Thanks for letting me know. I'll introduce and give a little bit of a background and answer any questions. But thank you. So just introduce myself. I'm Nicola Anderson. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development. For Downstreet Housing and Community Development. Tonight on the call, we have Kaziah Haviland, which is Downstreets Project Manager, and also Tyler Laberry from EverNorth, which is Downstreets Partner. And co-developer for this project. So we're here tonight requesting their approval of a $500,000 implementation grant. Through the Vermont Community Development Program for Berry City Apartments Project. This project is going to bring nine new rental units online. Through the renovation of the Old Ward Five School in Berry, and it's also going to add dead. Decades to the life of our Berry Street Apartments, or I mean, our Bromer Street Apartments Project, which consists of eighteen units. That Downstreet already owns and operates. And so currently the waitlist at Bromer Apartments is fifty five households. Occupancy of other Berry City Affordable Housing Projects is a hundred percent. And our one, one bedroom unit waitlist is seventy seven households and our two bedroom. Waitlist is sixty one households. We're very excited for the prospect to bring new life. To the Old Ward Five School and provide housing for nine individuals and families. We'll have four two bedrooms, one one bedroom and four studio apartments at this building. And the large basement here will provide ample opportunity for onsite laundry, as storage for tenants and for Downstreet. And Berry Housing Authority also intends to establish a project based voucher program. Provided that Downstreet receives federal funding for the project through a competitive process, Downstreet will be eligible to submit an application. For project based vouchers on a non-competitive basis. And we plan to take advantage of this for nine project based vouchers at this building. The work at Bromer Street Apartments really is focusing on necessary capital improvements. To address the health and safety needs, increase energy efficiency and just improve the overall functionality and marketability of the units. You know, we've got some pressing safety and. Safety related site work to be done. And we've worked with the city of Berry for, to redo a site plan, site plan, including. Getting crosswalks and sidewalks to separate. Traffic from pedestrian traffic, adding lighting. Improving stormwater and including. Common space in the exterior, like a playground for the residents. So we're really excited for this, this upcoming project. These are much needed upgrades at Bromer Street Apartments. And we're really excited for the opportunity to take advantage of this vacant building at the Old Ward Five School and provide housing to nine. Families. So thank you for the Berry, the city of Berry support so far. And we're really excited to be here tonight. Open to any questions.
Thank you for that great summary. And as a, as a public hearing, are there any comments from members of the public before we take questions from? City councillors? Mr. Whitaker.
Good evening. I'm not from Berry, but I have been interacting with some of the Downstreet properties in Montpelier. I just want to raise an issue that's going to need further discussion in policy development. And that's the nature, I believe, because of some of the funding, the federal funding that Downstreet projects are built with. There are. I'm told there are requirements that. Necessitate a level of surveillance, video surveillance. There's five or six cameras on every floor of our transit center. There's a number of, there's an extraordinary number in the new. Building above the hardware store. There's no clear, I've not got a straight answer from anybody about who gets to see that video. Is it only? The police that can unlock it when there's a crime reported? Or is it basically whoever happens to get the password and can spy on who's knocking on whose door? I think that needs some real work and diligent policy development. I don't have solutions right now, but I'm just raising that. We do not want to subject everyone who needs subsidized or low income housing to a level of anxiety. That, that type of video surveillance.
Ms. Anderson, do you have any comment to that?
You know, I don't, we put. Cameras, you know, and at our buildings exterior and interior as a safety precaution. You know, I don't know what our protocols are for handing out surveillance videos or what's used. I just know that we use it in time of need it. But I'm more than if you would like to, I don't know, I don't know if you're a resident at our properties, but you can communicate with your property manager. As well regarding those policies.
Can he, I see a question from councillor Booton.
Yep. So I actually got a question last night about this. Did the outreach to the neighborhood near the old school, which Ward Five School ever happen? Was there any outreach?
We've heard a little bit from residents. We've not done further outreach, just as where we're at right now is definitely applying for funding. But as we get further into development and getting closer to the zoning process, we figured that we'd do closer outreach. Truthfully, I was looking to see if we had neighbors attend tonight, just to hear more from who and what kind of questions they may have. But we do plan on doing further outreach to the, to the residents close by.
And can you explain what that further outreach is that you're planning on doing?
No, I think.
Not have that set up yet, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, we don't have anything set up yet. I mean, I think it's, you know, we could plan an information session to answer questions or get feedback. Or noticing the residents. I don't know if you, you've received any particular questions. Or heard from residents of what they would prefer, but we're open to any feedback.
Okay. Also, there was, there's no sidewalks in much of the area, some cross the blind curves. Four way intersections without stop signs, and this will add driveway to that. Paving, and there was some concern about that and stormwater runoff as well.
Yeah. Yeah. So there is a driveway there now that we'll be improving with this project and we will be improving stormwater. With this, you know, the building's really interesting how it's kind of up, up a hill and then again up elevation wise. So we, we really, that site needs a lot of work. We're really excited to make sure it's a safe site, but also is operating. The best that it's not adding additional headaches to, to the city of Berry.
So the, the pictures in the, the packet didn't have any sidewalks, so there's going to be no sidewalks added?
Sorry, the Ward Five School?
Correct. I, I, I have no questions about the Bromar Apartments. I'm, I'm super excited. You guys are moving the dumpsters. It's great. It's going to give access to Mr. Murray's land. Who, you know, passed away a couple of months ago and, but. I know he would be very happy to, to hear that. So I, I, the question is solely Ward Five.
Yeah. So Ward Five, unfortunately, just with. None of the properties there really have that, that walking pathway. So we, we, we are not adding that to the property there as it wouldn't have a connection piece either.
Also, Stockwell.
I'm so excited about the Ward Five project. I'm just thrilled that you're going to create more housing and a really attractive building. And, and a nice residential neighborhood. So, so yay. I, I do have a question for the city manager related to this. I know that there's a plan that DPW has a plan to replace the guardrail along Belvedere. I don't know for when, but I'm wondering if we could step that up a little. And is, and do you know if the plan to replace the guardrail goes the length of Belvedere to where it comes to High Holburn?
Yeah, Bill, I've like talked genuinely about it and, and he addressed concerns that he had this summer when there was some excavation below. That roadway. But I don't know the details, but I can certainly find out.
I just thinking if they're going to do the apartments, it might be nice to have the guardrail up there. And I assuming since you're having an MOU with the family center in circle, that you're expecting to have children there.
Yeah, we're hoping in the, the two bedroom units, we'll see what, I think there's a lot of opportunity to serve. Different sized families there, which we're really excited about.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have something additional to add?
No, no, sorry.
I was just saying, I'm hearing two items that may be related to the city's capital improvement, planning, programming and budgeting. That could be integrated into that future document. Once the, once you have a contractor to begin working on it, is there, Bern Rose?
Hi. Yes, I don't live up there, but I have a really good friend who does live next door to the building. And when I talked with her about it, she was really excited to hear that, that the building was going to be used to develop housing. It's been setting vacant for quite a long time now and she's just thrilled. It will be her direct neighbor. So I know I can't speak for her, you know, with that authority, but. That's the, the rumor coming from the neighborhood anyhow. I just wanted to share that as a positive, a real welcome to having the building taken care of.
That is so nice to hear. Thank you so much for sharing that. That's exactly the type of comments and just things that we're excited for. Hearing the neighbors are excited to see life back into that building.
Yeah, and it's a, it's got a, the yard is really large and I used to go up there and play ball with a little kid. So it's, it's got a lot of space besides the parking. And I think that'll be a wonderful area for our families and, and us a little mini community.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Booton?
Yeah, the four way intersection, I think that's something that tax should probably take up. Manager. Section, that do you, you guys foresee that being a problem up there?
Myself, truthfully, no. It's not something that's been brought to address, addressed to us. Lot, us personally, but I'm, I'm really interested to hear that, that you all are concerned about that.
Yeah, because I mean, if there's nine apartments, probably. Upward of at least nine additional cars in that, that small area might be something that you'd want to bring up with Tac or you can bring up with Tac.
We'll be sure to have that conversation.
Also, Stockwell.
Well, Humbert, Humbert Street. Which, where connects with railroad does, is going to need some work, I think, to have extra traffic because it's breaking down. So that's just something that is. You know, neither here nor there, but with extra traffic, that road is already in really rough shape. There's just not a lot of traffic on these streets. There's not anybody really going anywhere except on Blackwell. So I, I don't think will be an issue.
I, I, I'm not up there, so I, it was just a, somebody that, that posted on it. So I figured I'd bring it up.
So are there?
To bring this all together. Yes, I think that it's worth at least looking at that four way intersection with new people being there, but.
And that's something that may come up in the local development review process as well. I know the tech has a enormous backlog. Of unresolved citizen concerns. So it might be that the development review process is a better avenue for, to, to look at that. Are there any other comments or questions? I, with that, I think we can close this hearing if I don't hear any other objections at eight oh six PM. And the motion that is requested is to approve and sign the application. As mayor and councillors, as witnessed by city clerk Dawes in support of $500,000 scattered site grant request. For Granite City Apartments. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councillor Stockwell, second by councillor Sean Bell.
I would ask that the, that the motion include. Approval of the, the resolution, which is, which is actually the document that's being signed. So.
So is there, is that okay with a mover and seconder to approve the resolution? So amended. So any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, guys have it, motion carries. We'll get this resolution circulated and signed. That takes us, oh yeah, thank you so much for, I'm, I'm always jumping right ahead. So.
No worries. I just thank you. We're so excited. So thank you so much for your support.
So thank you again, and that will take us to our next item of new business, which is nine A that we moved down. This is an appointment to the Berry Area Development. Corporation. Andrew McKenzie has to be appointed as staff representative and there's also an opening. To nominate and appoint a council liaison if any of you are interested in serving in that capacity. It's, it's not an official position. It's just about coordination and communication with an organization. That we partly fund through the city budget.
I just, I, I would just make a, sorry, I didn't think of this before. I make that more generic. I would make it the city manager, not. Personalized to me or whatever, just so that the successor manager can fill that automatically.
So move.
There's a motion in the second to appoint the city manager as a staff representative. Any further discussion on that? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, guys have it, motion carries. The next item is the nomination appointment of a council liaison. Are there any members of? Council that would put their name forward to be nominated or nominate another person?
I'll do it. Jump at once.
All right, I'm seeing councillor. Oh, my bad. So we have a nomination for councillor, councillor during to serve as staff liaison. Are there any other? Council liaison. Are there any other nominations? Hearing and seeing none. Motion to approve by councillor Booton, second, second by councillor Wazazak. Any further discussion? All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the eyes have it, congratulations. That takes us to item, the addition of the item nine, I guess it'd be. The South Vermont Public Safety Authority Appointment. Manager McKenzie or. Would you like to just provide an overview of where, where things stand?
Yeah, well, as, as. Mr. Whitaker has said in last week's meeting and we just were chatting briefly, there's been a vacancy since, so. The end of last year, charter requires, their charter requires to build in forty five days. So we're tired of you getting that. Replaced and explaining that we should go through. I'll, I'll back up. The last two members who were, were representatives, I solicited just to try to fill the vacancies. But. Pursue the policy, so we've got to advertise the position and you know unless there was unless there is a council. Who wishes to step up. Otherwise, uh do my best to get the appointment process started, solicitation.
And Mr. Whitaker, would you like to speak to the the urgency of this matter?
I would, uh as I I believe I heard uh from speaking to your city clerk sometime. This might have already gone through one set of solicitation, uh there had been an advertisement done.
I saw it posted on the website. I don't know whether it's been pulled down then since then, but um I did see it posted there.
Yeah, so the, as I said, the charter, which is has the force of of law, statute uh. Says that a replacement appointment for a vacancy by a member. As opposed as distinguished from a at-large elected member. Kim Chaney and Donna Bate are both at-large uh elected members. But the two-year appointments by the two-member municipalities. Shall be replaced within forty-five days of a vacancy, so that puts the onus and the obligation on. The legislative body of the two members to make that appointment. And as I said, did the math, that was February third would have been the date by which that should have been done. As to the urgency. Uh the Department of Public Safety in the governor's budget. Has plans to spend fourteen million dollars on improving regional dispatch capacity. That was the subject of. The afternoon testimony in Senate of Ops last Friday and will be again this Friday as well as EMS this Thursday. The this is a very high priority item. The Capitol bill has tens of millions for improving cellular coverage and. That's called a critical communications some acronym. Currently, the plan is to give that those tens of millions to private for-profit corporations. A counterproposal on the table is to use that money instead, give it to regional public safety authorities. On the condition that they put proper planning in place for both cellular and public safety radios. So that's a and that would create a revenue stream for these public safety authorities by having tower space to rent to cell carriers. Capital Fire Mutual Aid, uh which is the owner of this current radio system that covers the. Half of the county or so uh claims that that rage regional radio system that is at imminent risk of failure. I'm not uh condoning that claim, but that you I'm sure you heard it from your assistant fire chief. C V fiber is in final design stages of engineering their fiber network. That is being built with hundreds of millions of dollars in public money for uh from the feds. And I just made that was this call I stepped out to make. They will be finalizing those designs in the next month or so. So now is a very critical time. Also, the C V fiber board next organizational meeting is April, I think. Second week in April and election of officers and getting resolving any leadership issues and getting on track. Is is essential, so the time, the opportunity and the money that's available. Means that now's the time to get our our ducks in a row. And you remember, I'm hoping that we will get additional members quickly, possibly by changing the charter to allow. The served town select boards to vote to join, not to vote for bonds, but to vote to join.
Thank you for that summary. I understand we have one open position. It's been open for a while. It's been advertised by the city. And uh and although we don't have applicants, uh we could appoint a member. Of council if one is interested tonight. Are there any questions or comments? I think councillor Booten has.
She, no, she had her. I have talked so many hours about this particular issue, you can go first.
I do like councillor Booten's frugality.
I I might consider volunteering. Just a thought.
So I will second that, um absolutely. I will refrain from what I was gonna say.
I wanna hear what you're gonna say.
Well, no, I mean, if you're interested, then I certainly don't want to say anything. No, I so, no, I don't want to do it. I was thinking about willing to do it, but I don't want to do it. Um my my issue is that as the city councillor, that's been probably the most pro. Throughout the last twelve years of Central Vermont Public Safety Authority. I'm growing old of it. I'm I'm becoming weary of it and I'm not confident that it's gonna go anywhere. Which is what I wanted to say on that, but you want to do it, bless your heart, go for it.
This is out of curiosity.
Yep, it's a great idea in in concept. It really is. It's just it's not coming. It it hadn't come to fruition and the majority of the reason is because Berlin and Berrytown didn't get on board. And if they did, that would be really good, which means we have to convince the state of Vermont to get rid of. Dispatching on a state level, and if we did that, we could probably do uh the regionalization far better.
Alright, well, it sounds like there is a lot of policy conversation that could be had and an extraordinary opportunity right now to. Make the most of the municipal structure we have, councillor Lozong.
Uh thank you, uh mayor. I sorry, just had a question about, you know, you you were talking about urgency, urgency is the. Is the organization, I mean, without this additional member, is there some sort of. Voting that's paralyzed or you don't have a quorum or is it really just a we're not at full strength and that makes it urgent? I just want to.
Well. Understand. In my own opinion, I don't speak for C D P S A. I've been involved actively involved since about two thousand.
I mean, you're right here.
I'm not speaking for the organization. Uh I'm frequently a critic of adherence to open meeting and public records. When when they're conducting votes by email, when they're meeting with their vendors with a quorum at a restaurant and talking business. I I take issue with it. I file a notice and 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 they sweep them under the rug. So there's a real need for leaders.
Without the respect, I don't really want to get into. I just want to know what I just wanted to understand. I didn't know if there was a quorum issue or. Or or just an energy issue or, you know, what the urgency was, that's all.
We're at risk of having paralyzed votes. Because uh two of the members are. Fully entrenched in the Montpelier Dispatch Facility.
I understand.
It's the city council and former police chief, so if we're going to, now is the time if we're gonna launch a regional facility. Uh it's time to put start putting that plan in place and you can't have conflicts of interest undermining that.
I understand. Thank you uh for stepping up councillor Shambel.
Yes, and I think I heard a motion from councillor Booton, second by councillor Lozong, or the other way around, okay? To uh appoint uh.
This might be.
Councillor Mel Shombel to the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority, always good to have. Uh ferry city seats full at our regional uh at our regional organizations. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, guys have it, most curious councillor Sean Bell is appointed.
Councillor, when you have a free weekend, I'll bring you up to speed.
I really, I really have a free weekend.
Seriously, I'll 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 catch up with you, at least begin to get do some background.
Okay, that that would be great.
And manager McKenzie, you'll notify those always or not to so.
And um. Mr. Whitaker, I might want to talk with you at some point also.
I will send you a briefing.
Okay, great.
Steve, would you mind copying me on that? So that takes us to our item nine.
Can you forward it to me afterwards?
F under new business unless the clerk corrects me.
I concur.
Alright, we're at nine F. This is the American Rescue Plan Act Funding Community Outreach Proposal. Um that uh that Steve and I jointly prepared. It's uh, you know, this is obviously a big, big decision, big discussion for council. And uh and there's an overall recommendation, um there's a some background and prior action. Including all the expenditures that have already been committed in the cover memo which uh. Uh which include the winter warming shelter of seventeen thousand dollars, which was an emergency housing. Expense Public Works Radio sixty-nine thousand six hundred dollars, which may. Uh be partly funded by uh Berry Town, uh since there is some water wastewater enterprise overlap that they. If they're willing to uh join in that effort, there's an assistant public works project management. Um item, junior planner, project management item, and the police first responders COVID stipend, which I believe was approved as part of the contract. Yeah, the police contract, um so that leaves um. The the question of um how to collect. Public feedback on what's important to the people in Berry City for this really once in a lifetime opportunity. To invest wisely and solve problems for shared goals. Uh this proposal says that we anticipate a budget of around five thousand dollars for this project. It may be much less than that. Um it's pretty quick uh timeline uh that includes. Uh four tasks for uh prospective consultant and two tasks. That would be carried forward by city tech staff based on the feedback from the public includes a an information page modeled off of. Something similar by the town of Jericho or the town of Montgomery. Um a public outreach survey, which has been done by several municipalities already throughout Vermont. Public forum on ARPA, so uh community and opportunity to talk about. Um this opportunity and elevate ideas from community members. Uh an outreach report that would and then an outreach report with all that data that would come back to council to inform. The the next steps, so the recommended action tonight is to authorize the manager to select and manage a consultant to initiate. And implement a public outreach plan as presented. Is there anything else you wanted to add to that?
No.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah.
Councillor Stockwell.
I questions and and wondering, I'm wondering, and this may not be a wise move, if we could use the all-in results. Rather than doing another survey when it's been really fresh, you know, just use the all-in survey, which I think is very clear. That's the thing, since we have our strategic plan coming up. To use what we define as as important goals for the city and for the council. To have that drive the our request for funds for citizen proposals. And that would reduce some steps, make it simpler and possibly cheaper cheaper, and the thing that we'd be getting to is. Designing a process in a committee to look at proposals, you know, just to really, here's here's what we're looking for. Here's what we're requiring, a one-page maybe format application. So that it would it would simplify some steps, I think, and yet add more depth at the same time.
Well, one, uh just to uh one response to that is that um the all-in for Berry project really never asked the community. Uh how you would spend this particular uh funding and is focused on just three specific areas, the community center, river access. And housing, um and the strategic planning process doesn't have a um a public outreach component, it's really about. Uh staff, department heads and city council, so something to consider, councillor.
Please, Steve.
Well, I'm just probably add to that, um I I none of those other processes were were I think focused on ARPA. Uh the intent here is to is to here is this money that's allocated um. To the city. It's it's a very direct way to try to reach out to the community, get up a community input specifically on how to spend the ARPA money. Or at least within the community innovation section.
Yep, so I like councillor Stockwell's idea and um but at the same time, I'm not interested in having the conversation about. What little products we can do without knowing what infrastructure issues we have that the the ARPA money can go to. You know, we're the north end, certainly would love to have a conversation about ARPA when it comes to the smell that they're dealing with, right? And we know that one of those caps are gonna be fixed and but we also know that there's a cap that's in serious need of some love. So you know, those are the kind of things that we need to think about when I can guarantee you, I can guarantee you that if you give them an option. The smell is pretty bad down there, come on, we all know it, right? You know, I don't even live in that ward and it's pretty bad. It it's, you know, we've really got to see what's on the docket for. For municipal infrastructure before we start talking about having a a huge plan, I you know, I. I think of what Berry Town's doing, which they're doing mostly infrastructure. It's they're trying to sparse out what's, you know, what's gonna affect the most amount of people. Um like I said, a cap on that would definitely affect the most amount of people. But I don't know what the deal is, not the deal, no, that it's not coming out right. It's already being taken care of, one of them is, but we've also got the other one that's getting close to to failing and we certainly. An opportunity that we have, you know, to use that money appropriately. Uh so I'm not, I I don't want to even head down this road without seeing what infrastructure needs that we have. It's it, you know, things like that. Uh I can, I can guarantee you that if you were to say, do you want a new cap for the sewer? Or whatever else is out there, they're gonna say uh new cap.
One of the, one of the benefits of the process like this is that it uh. Is that the list of infrastructure needs that staff might come back with might be very different than the infrastructure needs. The community members might identify and and the one thing I heard loud and clear on the campaign trail is that people really want. Some type of avenue to um to share their ideas about what they think are what what type of projects they think are important. I would say this isn't a big plan, this is just a poll, so what what are you thinking about in the community? Let's open a space for community feedback and certainly I think the the we'd all agree that the cap on the the treatment plan. Isn't is an important thing. It's also an opportunity for community members to be in the same room. And hear each other and hear what type of different priorities and different neighborhoods might have around the city and uh so. This the not alternate perspective councillor Waszczak.
Yeah, so I hear um I hear what you're saying councillor Booton, and I don't disagree with you. I first time I ran for council, I argued that. Our large scale, let's face it, we have tens of millions of dollars of infrastructure needs, long-term, big infrastructure projects. Including the DPW garage, which isn't even under the street infrastructure. We have now two point two and a quarter million dollars, so even if we poured. Two point two five million dollars into infrastructure. I'll make up the number thirty million, even though I'm sure it's higher than that, we would still have twenty-seven point five million dollars worth of infrastructure projects. That we're going to have to keep out. I'm a strong believer that this the seven, nine. If you include the the treasurer, the city clerk treasurer and the manager, we do not have all the answers and we do not uh have. Our pulse on every single neighborhood throughout this city. I'm sure that if you ask specifically those who are most affected by the smell, if you gave them a binary choice between fixing the cap or something else. They'll probably go with fixing the cap, but there might be another neighborhood who the biggest thing we could do to improve their quality of life. Were to, let's say, build a. Playground. Community innovation projects that have a direct impact on neighborhoods. And this is not just two point two five million dollars uh that the city council has. This is two point two five million dollars of Berry City money. Everyone in Berry City has the right to uh weigh in on how we spend this money. And so I think that a community outreach project like this is incredibly important. Because yes, to some neighborhoods, the most important thing that we could do might be an infrastructure upgrade. But to other neighborhoods, that might not be true, and you know, I I think I've I've messaged this to you before, I don't mean message, no. I've I've said this to you before councillor Booton, that I want to spend, uh I want to spend a good chunk of this money on infrastructure and I want to get the biggest bang for our buck there. But in the grand scheme of things, I think that this type of process, which will allow our communities, our neighborhoods. To directly influence how we spend this money uh is going to go a long way. And I think we can make, so so my point is we can do both. We can do community innovation projects, we can make people feel heard and we can invest. In our critically needed infrastructure updates. We don't have to go all in on one bucket.
So, yeah, so and and I understand, I but. like Counselor Stockwell said, we did have all in for Berry, which was, you know, Berry, you know, going for what they want, what people want. We could piggyback off from that or start all over with something else. And that again, I want to see what's on the docket for infrastructure in general before I make any decisions whatsoever.
And uh counsel, or is anybody who hasn't spoken yet would like to speak on this? Okay.
Just to, yeah, just to wrap up this exchange, um, you know, I I think we do have many lists that DPW has brought us of infrastructure projects that we could put a million dollars into at any given time. So I I think we have that information available to us. Um and what was the other point? Oh, all in for Berry, yes. All in for Berry, I I I agree with what the manager said. All in for Berry did not ask the question. If you were given two point five million dollars under these four rules, four, five, however many there are, there's a million, but you know. It did not ask the question, how would you spend this money? It asked the question, what's important to you and what would you like to see our community move forward in as far as big projects? As far as existing assets. And this was not necessarily an existing asset we had uh as we started planning and moving forward with the all in for Berry process.
Are there any counselors who haven't spoken to this item, would like to speak? Counselor Stockwell.
I thought we agreed at one of the early budget meetings to a division of the money to five hundred thousand for citizens and a million for housing and related things. And the rest of the money for infrastructure. And that was an agreement.
Yeah, it was, it was phrased in our minutes as an informal agreement. Um and so uh I think there it within the space of that language, some room to solidify, solidify and modify as uh as we move forward. But that was the initial agreement of the prior council. Counselor Lozong.
Was that a vote?
No, it was not.
Okay, and now there are different members on the council.
Yeah.
So I mean, and again, uh not trying to push back, but I'd like to start with a clean slate. I I would like to hear from as many people as possible. Uh don't have any preconceived notions that it should all be in spent on infrastructure, all be spent on housing, uh all be spent on innovation. But I don't see, I don't see the harm in listening uh to people and someone might just surprise you and come up, you know, we we have an opportunity. As long as I've lived here, we've never, uh the Semper Ban funds were very specific in terms of, it was wonderful of Mr. Semper Bond to think of his city. But it was very specific in terms of where that money should be spent on on bike paths. That was his passion. We have never had the opportunity in this city to talk about where would we spend two point five million dollars that, yes, of course, it came from the taxpayers. It came from the federal government, same thing. But I think as we go through, we can afford to be a little bold and a little less mundane as we go through this discussion. So I'm, I'm just interested in hearing the ideas as many people, whether it's we all show up forty five minutes before every concert in the park and just make ourselves available for people to come up and give us a memo and say, here, here's my idea. Uh I'm just interested in hearing from as many people as as we can. There'll be plenty of time for the practical, boring infrastructure conversations. Uh but I'd like to give people the opportunity to dream a little bit. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lozong. And I'll say that when Steve and I sat down to talk about this, you know, this would be normally be a kind of a quick project that a planning department uh could ta- take on. But as we know, our planning permitting and assessing department is on as uh uh vacant three, three positions. There's simply no bandwidth to do this.
Yeah, well, I think, I think the important piece though is the outreach. It's it's, it turns to the way that set the process. Piece that isn't staff contingent per se is is uh providing the outreach mechanism, getting that feedback. And that's feedback that comes from the residents, from the public. It's not, it's not staff feedback. The staff would call you. It's the public feedback that you're looking.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Steve um for putting this together.
Well, I I think the we sat down and talked about, we, we, we had different approaches. Um and I think this more reflects the mayor's and I'm fine with that. Frankly, it was a big help. He laid it out and uh this provides a direction and if that's the kind where the council wants to go, we'll implement.
Thank you.
Any other just questions?
Can I make a comment? Uh, I want to say I really applaud you for what you're talking about and doing here because I was encouraging my employer to do this. But it's not only the hearing, it's documenting as briefly, I I studied community planning it and that the documenting, there's tools available now that will allow residents to go to the library and have be assisted in putting a pin on the map and saying, this is where we need a sidewalk or this storm drain needs to be fixed or my kid's bike fell in this pothole. And basically feeling heard and feeling encouraged that they can be heard in the future is priceless. It's, you know, you can't buy that type of engagement opportunity. So how how you're going about this to invite people. You could start now, if you're shorthanded in public works, start with a Google spreadsheet that uh people can write to and they list the location, the item, maybe upload a photo. And then when you do get your staff holes filled, they can then pin it into a map. But to see staff comment on this is already in the works for two years from now, or this is got, is too expensive. But basically knowing that there's a prioritization process going on and how to affect affect it.
So you know, Steve, we, we already have one vehicle like that. It's called C Click, C Click Fix. Folks could at least see if they see a specific infrastructure issues or street, if you sidewalk issues, they can take a photo, click it and get it sent in. And and part of that process is to have the mechanism set up to respond.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Uh counselor Derry.
Just a quick question. Would it be possible to set up that uh C Click Fix to have that um ARPA kind of section in as well?
I'm going to gradually say no. I think that would compromise the uh the intent of C Click Fix. I mean, that's really geared to the kinds of things that Steve was talking about and we talked about specific infrastructure issues that are right there today. Uh I I think it would uh compromise the software.
Counselor Stockwell.
I noticed that one of the towns, I can't remember, had an online survey. So student, so citizens could just click on the survey and fill it out on the, on, and that seemed like a really nice feature. I mean, can get it out to people and can be there for the concerts as Council was on was suggesting, but that that online survey seems a really easy way for people to give some input.
Yeah, and for clarity, I'm not saying I don't want to hear what is out there. What I want to hear first is what Steve has on for a list that is absolute necessity. That's what I want to hear first before we start making decisions about this. That's all.
We do know that, right? Because we did see that fifty five million dollar, I think, list of infrastructure projects and counselor was.
That's, that's a, that's a broad list and uh I I think that we're happy to provide more project specific detail delineation, uh but so we'll, we can put that together.
It seems like it may be time to call the question. Their motion to
Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Counselor Wasak, second by Counselor Stockwell. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed. Motion carries and manager commends McKenzie will select and manage a consultant, which is under the procurement threshold. So we'll need to come back to uh to council and we can roll that project out. All right. So that takes us to the boss, speaking of infrastructure, takes us to an update of the status of the bond projects and upcoming um capital equipment items. So we unpacked, there were um the bond items. Um I I didn't see the capital equipment items, but
No, because you, you had said bonds. So when you say bonds, this is what I, this is what we're talking about.
All right. So would you, uh, yeah, how would you like to do this? Walk us through and uh what's uh what's pending for each bond?
Um, I can do that. I I tried to provide a provide a pretty comprehensive summary with with the narrative summary. Uh and just from a hundred thousand foot level uh between uh now and the last update, which was um, I'm saying, I'm gonna say three or four months ago. I thought I had the date in here. The, the actual uh percentage of projects complete has not changed because we haven't completed projects as we're working on them. So fifty six percent of the projects in the uh one, two, three, four, five, six bonds that we passed, bonds or notes. Uh there were fifty five projects uh identified. We have uh completed fifty six percent of those. Um, the, what's indicating the progress we're making is that the uh increase in expenditures or commitments since that last uh update, and that has increased from fifty two percent to uh sixty nine percent um of the bond funds. And the bond funds are just under seven and a half million dollars. Now, um I went through and did a um specific annotation of the uh spreadsheets for each of the bonds. Each line item or item. Get notes as to stats. Uh I wasn't necessarily planning to go through this whole thing, but I can. Uh so I'll defer to to
Maybe in the interest of time.
I think in summary, I I think in summary, we're, we're continuing to make progress. Uh probably the most significant project on this list is the North Berry uh pump station, uh Berry, North Main Street pump station. And that project uh went out to bid uh Friday. Uh we uh will open bids on April twenty sixth. I'm keeping my fingers crossed and getting a reasonable pricing. We could be under construction within thirty to forty five, maybe sixty days from the bid opening. Again, assuming the bids are reasonable bids and the goal is to have the project done and operational certainly by the first of December. Uh a lot of that's going to be depending on lead time for the pump station and other equipment. That's um, that's about uh that's actually budgeted in here to a million fifty thousand dollars, but we've gotten, we've received about three or four hundred thousand dollars in grant funding since that time. So that'll, that'll free up uh some of that bond money to to you use as contingency or uh a future allocation.
So when money's freed up, is there a a circle back to council for reallocation or is this?
No, because I I'm not, as manager, I'm not, I'm not at that point where I, where I would say um, okay, we've got, I I want to get the project, I want to get the whole list done before we we say, okay, we've got this much money left.
And in terms of pinch points, um or ask you, and so it seems like um there may be some staff capacity constraints to get the uh get some of these projects out. Will the assistant public, would bring in the assistant public work director on sooner?
Absolutely. But we're, I mean, Bill was, they're, they're working hard to get them out now. They've got uh I think three or four requests for bids that they're in the process of preparing. I would like to say or reiterate, when you asked me the question, when would this all be spent? And I think that was last fall sometime. Uh I I think what I said was probably at least the um seventy five to eighty five percent of that, this will be spent by the end of this construction season. Some may go over to the next year.
Quick treasure does.
I I was just going to say that the question was uh reallocation of of funds within the bond um as projects, you know, um sugar out. The, we do have, based on the language that went before the voters, we have restrictions within sort of categories um associated with the bond. We work with our bond council. Once we know what we're looking to go out for, particularly with these sort of grocery list bonds that we've approved over the last few years that have a number of different categories. We work with the bond council on what the question is that goes before the voters. And then that does put some parameters around what we're doing. So we couldn't take you know, money from a bond that was supposed to do the pump station and you know, build a skating rink, uh you know, because that wasn't part of the, the initial language that was approved by the voter. So there, there are some constraints, but it does give some flexibility within the projects that are included for projects that run over or projects that that blessedly run under and allow us to, so that flexibility. So.
In, in well, I'm gonna say forty five years of doing this kind of thing, either the private sector or the, or the, or the public sector. Unless, unless they were small projects and and really strict lump, lump sum. They'd never come in. You know, there's not, there's not, I don't think there's anything on here that's coming in at the price. These are, these were budget prices and they were best estimates and so. But the question I have is, so let's say we get done everything on the list and we have three hundred thousand dollars cumulative left over. Um and and there weren't legitimate other items that would fall within the umbrella that the voters approved in a bomb. Would, would it be necessary then to um go back out to the voters to say something like, we got three hundred thousand dollars?
We pay it back. It just, it just gets treated as a, um, well, it's not paid back because of course we don't have the money. We have the the ability to requisition the money and it would just be canceled out from our, from our debt.
Yeah. We'll find a way.
So counselor was.
Um, yeah, just one quick question on the twenty eighteen nine hundred thousand dollar bond. Um, I'll remember as soon as you start telling me, can you remember why that boiler was a half million dollars?
I'm sorry.
Over budget.
Say again.
Uh so the nine hundred thousand dollar twenty eighteen approved bond
Yeah.
Had a budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the boiler for digester heating. Um and it ended up costing over seven hundred.
No, that's a good kick. That's a coating there. The we
Okay.
The expenses, the expenses are more in line with the budgets. We discovered that as we were going through.
Okay.
Dawn needs to sit down with um bills and go back through each of the invoices and there's, there's, there's a miscoating there.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions from council? I have a few, but reboot for the merchants row. Um it's like there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the design phase, but the uh the plan, the conceptual plan you're working on would eliminate ninety some parking spaces.
Well, we're not, we're not working on that.
Okay, so you're not going to implement that in this?
Well, first of all, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a unilateral decision on my part. That that is the line item that we're using to fund the TIF assessment that's going on right now. With White and Burke.
We're not
That's the way it was. No, no, it's, no, it was very clear that it was for basically TIF pre-planning, it doesn't fall under the, the TIF approval language that would have that would have triggered a TIF bond vote.
Okay, I misunderstood that. So there will, will be no balance left to redo a merchant row concept plan?
Well, I, I mean, I don't know, we're, we're, I don't think anybody expects that we're going to spend another two hundred fifteen thousand dollars on this phase. I mean, we may well, I hate to guess off the top of my head, but let's say we spend fifty or sixty thousand dollars to complete the assessment with the, with the uh other consultants that are involved in doing some of the assessment right now. That was, that would say, let's say there would be two hundred thousand dollars left over. Council will have to decide how to use that.
Any other questions about different bond items listed? Hearing and seeing none?
Yeah, if you, if you have the time and the, and the patience, if you go through that right hand column, that'll give you a very specific uh as much as you can in a notation type of annotation, uh status of each of the bonds. Or each of the bond items.
I want another question on a bigger bond item. It's the Vermont sixty two and Berlin Street, uh six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Looks like we're scoping uh intersection improvement. Looks like we're scoping intersection improvements and that sticks out.
Well, that's not, that's not intersection improvements. That is to replace the, there's a, there's a main transmission main under there that I think there's actually two. One of them is compromised right now. It's shut off.
So water transmission?
Yes. So, uh, Bill had budgeted at six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, thinking that we were going to have to do or allow for what we would call an open cut where you literally got to dig a trench all the way through to replace that. And now it looks like the direction will be to actually do what's called directional drilling, where you actually just, you don't excavate, you excavate pits at each end, but you don't excavate the whole line. Drill the, what would be essentially a plastic piping, which you're anticipating would cost significantly less. What's significantly less? Three hundred thousand. So that's a case where there may be a little chunk of money. We hope so. That's what we're thinking right now. And that's a, a piece that, that's one of the requests for bids that is being worked on now. Hope to do that this late spring, early summer and, and again, favorable bids.
Council stuff.
So you, you could make improvements at the crossing at sixty-two in Berlin Street?
Sounds like no.
Wasn't included with.
Never mind.
I would just point out, I, I was, I was thinking this along those same lines because our two-stip projects in the state transportation improvement program are more than twenty years old. And they reflect transportation engineering values that are probably thirty or forty years old. And, and we have nothing in the pipeline. And I was thinking about that intersection in terms of opportunities for, for improvements.
So and which intersection we're talking about?
Sixty-two in Berlin Street.
That would be, that would be a state project.
So any other questions about the bonds? Well, thanks for this. I think this is helpful to get just to keep track of these big projects.
I don't, well, this, this may be the last update I would do, but I, I think getting an update every three to four months.
Just for that, we'll make that the very last agenda item.
Okay, alright.
Going to our next digit item. It's nine H. It's an update on planning permitting and assessing department staffing. So I know we, we, I think their councils expressed some concerns about the ongoing vacancies and, and curious about what, what's being, what actions are being taken to to backfill these critically important positions.
Yeah, and their, the, the concerns the council have are no different than what the staff has and I as manager. So we've re-advertized the assessor position. We've increased the wage, wage range by ten thousand dollars. So it was fifty-seven thousand. I think it's up to sixty-seven thousand. We've re-advertized in all of the state venues, Bala, the this is association, the, the planners listserv. We've advertised the, this, of course, it's on the website. We've advertised in the Times August and indeed. So I mean, if anybody has any suggestions about other advertising venues, I really am concerned that this is a, this is a skill, if you will, it's sort of a dying skill. I mean, there, there number of processes. My parent was very lucky to be able to reach out to somebody they knew who was a, was a practicing appraiser and said he would take on the challenge of becoming an assessor. So tried to be very proactive with the permits administrator. The position has been advertised. There, there's an extraordinary long delay in getting advertised, but it now is advertised. We've also increased the salary in that position by six thousand dollars. So we're trying to be competitive and attractive. That one is on the, the website as well. It's in the Times August. The planners listserv, I believe. I haven't confirmed that with Janet, but it'd be. A planner's listserv. So we're, but in the meantime, I have worked with Janet and with Dawn in the finance department. And we're going to job share Heather Grantfield, who was previously in that position. She's going to job share just under two days a week. So, and that's arrangement that'll go for about a couple of months, but at least in the immediate short term, we're trying to bring in some, some human resource capacity.
Counselor Stockwell.
I'm wondering if the council thinks it'd be worthwhile to hire a, a headhunter for a very short term to entice employees. Cause the regular avenues don't seem to be working. It really is holding us back. Is that something that's worth investing a little bit of money in? To have someone that we say, gosh, we have these three positions that are so important.
Can you, I mean, if that, if that is something the council would like to have us do, I'm, I'm fine with that. And, and frankly, the as I noted in the budget report, I think the fiscal year twenty-two budget is in great shape. I think there's enough latitude, flexibility and the savings I anticipate, the fund balance I anticipate to.
I, I just want to make clear that I don't, it's in no way an expert. You know, I'm, I'm not saying that people are not working hard. I think people are working so hard that they don't have the time to do this and this.
Yeah. Well, not that, but I mean, headhunters have different avenues. So we'll see. I mean, we'll have to reach out. I think of a headhunter. I'm, I'm thinking usually of a, of a well, probably not so much an assessor, but a higher level, if you will, professional jobs and occupations and so on. But we'll try to reach out and find somebody who might have, might operate at that venue, if you will, of, of job sets.
Counselor was.
Yeah, I mean, that's something I'd be interested in looking at. See, at least see how much, if we can do it for cheap money and help get people in the door fast.
Well, then I don't, Tom, you may have more experience with this than I do, but headhunters don't come cheap. Um, and they, they're, you know, often a certain percentage of what the starting salary is or something like that. And it's not a small percentage. It's twenty-five percent or more.
Yeah.
But we, 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 we wouldn't go down a path that we didn't know what the exposure was or is. So we'll find that out.
Yeah, I, I have no idea either. Counselor Lozong might know it. And just one other thing that came up was maybe asking Cody Morrison to distribute the jobs to some of his networks as well. I mean, he normally worked in northern New Hampshire and right around Concord, which isn't too far from Barry if we wanted someone semi-local or at least from New England. So I just, that was something that popped into my head while you were.
Yep, thank you.
Counselor Lozong. A recruitment agency will generally cost you ten to twenty-five percent of the annual salary. It's not.
Of whatever position they're trying to fill.
Yeah. But I think, you know, at this venue, if you look at the, you know, the budgets that were passed and the vacancies that not by choice have been held. The ten to twenty-five percent is certainly there. The assessor's position has been vacant for a year. Eighteen months. So gee, there's a hundred and fifty percent, you know?
I'm not worried about, I think, having the funds available. It's just, I just want to be clear that the hunt headhunters are coming at a significantly greater rate than advertisers in the paper. But that's fine. It's good suggestion.
But they're only paid for success.
Exactly.
So then maybe there's an opportunity expanding this conversation a bit is to think about the, the positions coming online July first for the Assistant Public Works Director and the Assistant Planner, which are likely going to take a long, longer lead time given the labor.
Well, we're gonna, I had hoped to meet with the staff by now and just one meeting kicks off another, but I really want to start advertising for those positions that's coming up. It'll, it'll take that long to fill.
Well, and I would just add how much I think the, the, the council and, and appreciates all the work and all the loose ends that Janet Chadney, the planning director, has picked up over the past eighteen months plus. And, and I must, we appreciate the hard work and, and don't want her to get burned out or leave. So.
Yeah, I think she's already burned out. It's, we're, we're. But I, I tried to do what I can support her. I made the arrangements for this, you know, temporary TDY. It's, it's only two days a week, but there's two more that she has right now. So.
Council.
Would that headhunter position be qualified for ARPA money?
Think so?
No. Does it not directly work on something?
Right. Oh, you mean the reverse? No, no.
Let's try to.
Set infrastructure. Yeah. In jest, in jest.
Any other comments or questions? Is okay. Well, that takes us to upcoming business and a note for next week, we're meeting on April fifth. We're tentative in planning for a six P M. Executive session.
I gotta talk to you about that.
So then that's a maybe. Okay. And and including a, a potential police advisory committee appointment. I'll be planning to bring a resolution or a memo on bringing some youth art to city hall. Lighten up and brighten up the atmosphere in here. We will be talking with the manager search committee to see if they need to come in and provide any updates as needed. If they have any updates, keep that communication going. As they work through the, the next month, their schedule, counselor Stockwell has mentioned that the trash committee is ready to report out disband. We have some resignation, another resignation for the tree stewardship committee, some opening reappraisal contracts and more coin drops. Any other items that anyone's intending to propose? Yeah, council was.
Yep, there's, there's some emails going around. The police chief, the deputy chief, the manager and I have a meeting on the books to explore body camps for BCPD potential funding sources. The chief forwarded along a yeah, grant opportunity that came on board, which looks great. So that's just, uh, just for counselors to have background, I was instructed by the police advisory committee to set up that meeting, uh, cause there's interest within the committee of moving forward.
The timing is good. I've actually put in a couple of agenda items and, and one or two out agendas, but I remember the dates correctly. Next, the next advisory committee meeting is when?
Uh, so the next police advisory committee is April eleventh.
Yes, okay.
And then council the next day.
Placed on the April twelfth council agenda, a discussion and at least the, the approval to pursue that grant. I don't want to go down that road referred at all. So I mean, that's going to be, that's going to be, and, and maybe if it gets to the council on the, on the twelfth, that may be something where you may want to two agendas and have some preliminary discussion and and then some follow-up. But it's, it's a, it's a, it's a significant policy decision on the part of the council and the police department. And you're talking, I, I had looked into it last year with Chief Bombardier. And if I remember the numbers correctly, you're, if you're talking both body cams and cruiser cams, you're probably talking something in the neighborhood of two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So.
So that's going to be an item that's coming up in the police advisory committee. We'll have a recommendation for.
Yeah, you were saying, I, I found something Teddy, the, the advisory committees had a general discussion about it already. But I, I wanted to get it, work with Teddy to get it on your Bob and get it on the agenda for the eleventh, the police advisory committee, then have them come to the council on the twelfth and, and participate in that discussion.
The only other thing I forgot to mention is that the energy committee is actually has three resignations. I think as I understand it from people who are moving on to other opportunities, including Elaine Wong, who's now accepted, accepted a position as Winuski City Manager. Which is a great news for Elaine, but if you know anyone who's interested in energy issues, definitely reach out to, to them as those appointments get posted in, in the coming month. So if there's no other items, counselor or that counselor, once again.
Just wanted to, as a quick follow-up to your, your item about student art in city hall. We've had student art in city hall before. And there actually are still hooks below all the wooden, the, the wooden display case that's out in the lobby. There are like cup hooks all the way that were there for, for art. They obviously wouldn't be for every kind of art, but there, A, there is a history of it and B, we do have places. So.
All right. Well, yeah, there's a lot of, quite a, there's a lot of logistics behind it, but we'll, we'll cover that later. Any, any other items? Okay. Hearing and seeing none. That takes us to round table for the good of the order. Counselor Shambel.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Counselor Dearing.
I'll pass.
Counselor Lozong.
I will yield.
Counselor Stockwell.
I will pass. But I've been following.
You can't do it in that order.
I'm on passing. I, I hear, I've been following front porch forum and there's a lot about cats and dogs. I, I don't really want to go back there, but I, I would really don't want to go back there. But I would like to know if we have an agreement about with the animal control officer to capture feral cats. Is that a city activity?
Yes.
And I'm probably sorry I asked this.
That sounded so true. Okay. I'd say they've covered.
And, and with that, I pass.
Takes us to.
As the one that steps in that one every single time, I am not stepping in that one. Uh, I will say on Monday, I watched the Barry Business Hour with Cody and MJ. Mary Jane was on there. Magnum from Wabi Jewelers. And she, she made a comment about activities in Barry and she said, you know, there's nothing to do. And she, she was talking about how one, I think, I think she, somebody was saying there was nothing to do and she, she said, you know what? I, I'm going to say yes to every activity that comes across my plate. And she said, it was the best summer she had. I'm not willing to commit to a whole summer of saying that. But it was, it was a really cool challenge and I think that I am going to give that a go. Cause you know, the idea that Barry has nothing happening in it is not true. And, you know, yeah, so I just thought that was a really cool thing. And I'm going to be meeting with Greg Milo on Monday. He's going to show me the vision for the Rainbow Bridge Community Center. So.
On Friday.
Yep. That I'll pass.
So that for me, I wanted to say I really enjoyed the reception on Sunday for Chief Phil. It was a great, well attended, very welcoming, well attended by many, many, many people who are here in the room tonight.
Joey and Jeff said that. Delicate decadence served refreshments.
And speaking of saying yes, there's a seat, seat swap this weekend sponsored by the Granite City Garden Club at the Aldrich Library where you can trade, trade seats for the garden. Uh, I think they have some donated seeds from some local seed companies, which is great to see. I did a fun interview with high school junior, junior Becca Low Presty. Who's working on a civic, civics class and, and their students throughout the community. Just interviewing leaders and asking them great questions. Made me think quite a bit about the next two years ahead. There's a Wellness Wednesday is happening. And I know I, I forgot to bring my details on that, so I might have to hold that over for next week. But I will say that it was great to meet with Council Lozong and Counselor Stockwell Sunday for the housing, housing working group. We, we talked about the next steps and we look forward to reporting back incrementally. As we make a little bit more progress. So we need to set up our, our next meeting and keep moving that, moving that forward. And with that, I'll pass. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're, we're adjourned.